Uh, we're gonna go.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna really.
Yeah, this is the driving test.
Stephanie?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You're always gonna have to come home and see your.
God.
Do you guys like?
Washington?
Black.
Oh.
I don't like you.
So. Last.
So.
Yeah.
No.
I think.
I agree.
This sounds a little bit different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It was very.
This has been very strong.
This is free.
Well, we don't really like this thing.
Yeah.
Nope. I got to. Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
So.
Just. So. I know. It's. Have to remember. Break your street. Yes. And uh.
Oh.
And.
Okay.
So. Sorry, Sarah. For that. I'm sure he's.
Every street.
We're going to resume our, oh. Guess we're not gonna resume our session.
Er, get in here.
Er.
Er, then. There you go. Off here.
Was Brittany out there?
Yeah, Er.
Hi.
Yeah, Er.
You're tardy.
Oh.
Ha, ha, ha.
Oops, Rob. Hey. Smite him again some two minutes.
Okay, we're returning back to our regular session. Our next item on agenda is Navajo liquor license.
I know that we can, we can do Navajo liquor license.
You're pro team?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellner?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Uh, C, item C, we're gonna go angular mercantile liquor license. And before you make a motion to, um, approve the liquor license, I have an issue with the approval of it. And it stems from Proposition 125, which is on November 8th, 2022, the people voted to amend the liquor and bear coats to allow current fermented malt beverage off-premises retailers to carry wine products. That would be convenience stores and like, um, the grocery stores, okay? That, and it became available as of March 1st, 2023. And the conversion of license was on March 1st, 2023. All fermented malt beverage off-premises retailers will automatically have their license converted to a fermented malt beverage and wine retailer license. Only. Fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses will be removed as an available license category. So the state issued their license, their updated licenses. So today, I went into the mercantile. And let's go pass that down. So they can all see it. It's not beer or wine is what I'm showing you.
I see that.
That's in violation.
But does their liquor license say because this is?
They're a convenience store, okay? They're a convenience store, so they can only sell beer and wine. That is hard liquor. It's not allowed. So my suggestion is that we hold off until the issue is rectified.
Wouldn't Navajo be considered?
No, they have a liquor license. They're a liquor store. They can sell hard liquor. They can sell beer. They can sell wine. That is a liquor store.
And Ringo's also.
They're a liquor store.
I think that, does Ringo's have like a separate liquor license? Because I mean, they do kind of technically fall under a grocery store too, which is under that provision that you just read. So do they have a separate liquor license?
That's the main thing. They allow grocery stores to combine. That's before. We used to have it on the other side. And then when you, when the state, there was a change. And then that's where it was combined.
So it's just basically convenience stores.
Convenience stores or, you know, your grocery stores. So they have, you can grab a bottle of wine, a six pack of beer, whatever you want.
But there's no hard liquor.
But you cannot have hard liquor. And here we have hard liquor.
For the comfort and fireballers.
Yeah, so my recommendation is that when you vote is that we hold off on approving the liquor license for the mercantile.
I moved over table.
Till it's, uh, rectified.
I second it.
Second table, ring it. Is that what?
Mm, to table it.
Until the next meeting.
Okay.
Things get tabled and then whenever you come back.
So they would have the opportunity to get rid of it? Or, how exactly now? Because they're not a grocery store, is that what?
Right here, in, in, in March, uh, or November 8th, 2022, the people voted to amend the liquor bear, uh, liquor bear codes. And this allowed them to carry fermented beverages off-premises. So you can have wine and you can have beer. But you can't have, you can't have miniatures. You can't have pints of whiskey or rum or vodka or anything of a sort. That falls under the category of liquor. And if you're all wondering how I know this, I found the retail for quite some time. So I do keep up with liquor laws.
Well, can they do like the other places, uh, separate the liquor out?
No.
To a, a store?
Brittany, this is. Liquor, they don't have a license for liquor. This in this picture is liquor, okay?
I understand, but.
So if they have beer and wine, that's fine.
But my question is, is could they set up?
Yeah.
Giving another license, giving a liquor license? Can they? There's no place in that store that they could put a separate section to have liquor.
Sorry, no.
Why not? Ringo's is a separate liquor store.
But they've had that liquor license before. And if you remember, when you first moved here, Ringo's was a separate liquor store, okay? They had to ring the buzzer, we come running, open the door, let them in. And, and then it was changed. So that's why it's open on that side and they can have their liquor store. And they can do, they're a grocery store, so they're allowed to do that. A convenience store is not allowed. That's the difference right there. But can we get a, a vote to?
To table it?
You're pro team?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Um, I wanna bring up, and I have told a few of you, so I, I am now working for, uh, Bob and the Mercantile and for Ace Hardware handling their finances. So can I go ahead and vote to table it? Or should I abstain on everything in regards? I would abstain then.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellner?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Okay, it will go on our next agenda.
Will they need go to night?
Sure.
We should notify them of what's going on.
Yeah, obviously. Because we don't need to have a copy of their license here. We don't need to know something.
Right.
Who will handle that?
Their license will not expire until October 10th of '24. So they have ample time to correct this.
Okay, if I talk to them.
No, no, Vernon, we're, we're not gonna go that route, okay? We're gonna do this legally.
Yeah, again, go.
And that's one time.
A letter is going to be sent to them, letting them know the decision.
Okay.
He was here earlier.
Yeah. So Sarah, will you complete that letter then? And let them know?
Okay, let's go to sewer tap for Glenn Aner.
Do we have a moratorium on the sewer taps also?
Is he here?
No.
Does he have to be here to approve a sewer tap?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
No.
But no, I don't think, definitely a moratorium on sewer tap.
Just a water, water, right?
Yeah. Now, we think that we would want to approve it.
Why sure? We need the money.
He probably already paid.
Oh. Could I ask?
Your dad did, right?
Yes, ma'am.
See?
I'll pay for the water too if it, uh, give it to me.
We'll work on that.
Got you.
Could I ask something?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Just where exactly, where exactly just the money that's paid for the tap go? Do you know? I'll be sure by. Go here.
It, it should go.
Can we go into the sewer fund?
For the maintenance of the sewer, uh, sewer fund.
Okay, everybody's aware that town only does work up through the property line. From the property line to the residence.
Yes, sir.
The individual owners, it's. They are aware of that. But I motion to re-approve the sewer tap.
Did you hear what he said?
Yes, ma'am, $10 to put afterwards.
Okay.
Explain to me like that. That's it, that's cool. Learn about her to put in.
Can I get a motion to approve a sewer tap for Glenn Aner?
I make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Romero made the motion. Sorry, can I get a second?
Nobody's listening to you.
Get by the microphone.
Get by the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Send it.
Row calm, please.
You're pro team?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellner?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Where's his, where's this guy's place at? There's no address.
It's right behind the housing area. That's what I wanted to bring up.
Is that the, that, that new, the house is right on the corner?
No.
Behind it.
There is, there is a fifth wheel that's sitting back that they moved in there. He bought lots, one, two, three, and four. And he's fenced it in and there is a fifth wheel in there.
Behind the housing?
Yep. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up eventually is when did we start allowing people to move in an RV or move home and live in there?
That's what this gentleman's question is, I really like.
I don't know because, you know, if that's what my means are, you know, having a roof over my head, then that's what I'm gonna do. And maybe my intentions are to build the house. I don't know.
One of the things that Sarah has been looking at. I got a neighbor south of me. She's got three campers. And two campers parked there that they live in. And I was under the impression that Tyra had told them that they could do that temporarily, that they had to put in the house.
Yeah, most, most other towns and counties and things like that do have some sort of, um, you know, I had some land in, in Alamosa and it's like you had to get a camping permit. You had to have, um, and it really, you know, irritated me. I mean, you had to have, um, septic, you know? So that there were certain things in place.
What are you trying to do?
Right, yeah. I'm, I'm just, that's what I'm just saying is that, you know, that there has to, they want certain things in place so people aren't, you know, defecating on the property and, you know, things like that. So I think we need to see what our town ordinances are in regards to, uh, RVs and fifth wheels and.
I think we need something.
There's that guy that's parked next to the ditch over there coming, the road coming down for a school.
The bus.
No, no.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Train is supposed to go into the ditch.
Yeah, no, uh-uh.
It's kinda gross because I ride my dirt bike through there and I can't tell you how many times I hit files and, you know. And it's not too.
Actually not.
Run around town, take note. Run around some town.
Back around the code enforcement, which we're trying to get there.
Sarah was telling me that she was not able to find any of that in ordinance or resolution. She didn't find anything.
But even in that, we can visit, you know, the subject and decide what we're going to do with it. Like, we can't just let somebody move in like that right next to the day doing their little bus or whatever they're living in. We just can't do that.
Can county, county, uh?
These people up here. Glenn, he moved a week ago. He was my neighbor. He don't have no utilities, nothing. By the crater, and moved in there. They don't have water, sewer, uh, press, he, nothing.
As I'm asking, is there, is there any county ordinances that would supersede, uh, or, you know, go over what we have in place for the town? For Los Angeles County?
I don't think the county, no.
No, because it's still in the statutory, because we're statutory town. The county has no. We still make our own governments then?
So it's something that we need to visit?
Yes.
Right. So next agenda, probably.
But that doesn't, we're gonna look into it later, but that wouldn't stop the sewer tap board, would it?
No, but it's gonna stop because if the town has to put it in so far, or is that what it is?
You go to the property line.
But the town still has to be involved, right?
Right.
And, and currently we don't have anybody to do that. So, I mean, it can be approved, but he's gonna be like him and have to wait till somebody can do it.
Where do we look at applications here real quick, aren't we like?
Well, that's another subject, but yes, we are, we are, Vernon. So, yep.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, so central square, item E, central square renewal.
What is that?
That's our, that's our assist program.
Oh, assist?
Yeah.
Uh, when's that bill due?
September 1st. November 1st.
Central square.
That's the assist program. That's the one they use for their paperwork. That's the one they, you were telling me, the water, you know, the bill for the utilities is one business. Correct?
Um, where's that?
Angela has a suggestion.
Yeah, I've got a copy of that in this, somewhere. Is this? Okay, so the total bill is $5,376.69 and there's basically an all apart menu on here on this bill. Can we pick and choose some of these things? Or, or, and is this full amount due at the time of the bill? Or is it broken into payments?
No, so what they'll do is if we don't respond, they'll go ahead and send an invoice, I believe, September 1st, uh, for that amount. And then we have whatever, 30 days, I guess.
30 days, so we still have a little bit more time, okay? I mean, it's, it's on, I, I motion that we have to, what?
Did you see the total?
Yeah.
For the year, I mean?
$5,300.
And where we, what did you see the balance?
That's what we're saying, that's what she's saying. We've got time, okay? They're gonna send us an invoice September 1st. And she thinks it's probably around a net 30. So I'm gonna motion to table this one more time because we got a little more time on this. For the year. Until I talk to Assist again, I will call and talk to our rep at Assist and see if there's anything that we can piecemeal out or, um, do if they offer terms like as far as monthly payments. If we can pay, you know, this $5,300 by month, you know, broken that down into 12 months, you know, that becomes a lot less, $400, you know, $450, $500 a month is obviously way better than having to pay $5,000 until we can get the QuickBooks going and, you know, decide if we're gonna bring in some other sort of utility billing. We just need a little bit more time on this. So it sounds like we still have at least about six weeks before the bill is actually and finally due. They'll send us an invoice warning, stuff me on September 1st. Okay.
Give me a motion, wait.
So, yeah, motion to table this.
I second it.
Row calm, please.
You're pro team?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellner?
Yeah.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
That's also our insurance gonna have to be tabled. And it's something that the board is gonna have to revisit.
I don't have anything on it. I don't have anything in my pocket on insurance.
Well, we checked on the price quote from what we have now, our insurance agent. And we're currently paying a little over $2,000 a month. But this new insurance that he has, we would be paying around $367 a month.
So what is the employer's contribution to that?
The board had motions a few years back to pay 100% of the family.
That is where we need to go back and revisit. We do. As even the large company that I worked at, I still have to pay and we were through the union.
I think, I think the employer, if they're going to pay, has to pay, I don't know, maybe these HR laws have changed, but if the employer offers to pay, I believe they have to pay half or did if they paid anything. But I don't think they have to pay anything. They, they can opt out of paying anything and the employee can cover 100%. They just wanna offer the, I have to double check on that.
Well, it's something that we need to get quotes on and it's something that the board needs to revisit again.
Right. Well, I mean, from $2,000 a month to $300 and something dollars a month is a huge savings right there. So I think, you know, anything, if anything, um.
Did you get other quotes besides that one?
No, this is the only one that got, and it's a new, um, insurance program called.
If I was making $16 an hour and I was getting insurance pay, I'd have to reconsider still my pay to cover the cost of the insurance that you lay off.
It was, I'm sorry.
They don't get paid like $16 an hour and we're talking about making them pay a portion of this? I mean, that's. If I, if it was me, I would ask for more money to just cover the cost of that. You flip burgers for $16 an hour.
Well, in a perfect world, that would work, Vernon. But with the situation the way it is financially, we don't have the money. We're trying to cut corners.
But down to 360 something is.
We have to, we still have to look at the plan. That's what I'm saying. It's not like we can vote and say, sure, let's take it. We need to look around. We need to get quotes and then the board can decide what they, where they wanna go with it, right?
Right, yes. And I would just suggest that we look root precautions of what we're, we do to them.
Um, I would also suggest too that you individually look into the Affordable Healthcare Act. Um, with lower incomes, you can actually get significant amount of subsidies. Um, so it's something we could always look at, you know, giving our employees an allowance um, on their paycheck versus actually paying for the insurance. You can give an allowance. It's not, I actually just looked into this for my LLC I just opened. You can give an allowance, um, and it's not taxable, uh, income to them and yet it's still a write-off for a business, you know, this is a town, obviously. Um, but, I mean, you might be able to find some decent, um, you know, policies going for individual coverage through the Affordable Healthcare Act. Um, I mean, that will be a lot, it'll be along that lines of even probably less of that. $300 was for how many people? Two or three? Four? Four? I mean, that's still pretty good. $300 for four people is still pretty darn good, so, um.
Monica's gonna take a look at it and say.
Okay. Um, I actually did medical billing for four years too, so I'm very well versed in insurance.
Stephanie?
I'm just, I know you guys are looking at tables, get my own. I just want everyone to be aware that the premium wasn't paid for June, July, August, which is a total of around $7,000. I know, I don't have exact numbers, but it's about $7,000. If it's not paid by September 1st, then the people on the insurance now is going to get canceled. And they were not gonna be covering anybody's claims or insurance from August 1st forward.
Okay, so I guess, has anybody been to the doctor since August 1st?
Uh, it doesn't, I don't have the health insurance in the town, so.
I think I'd see you don't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I have my insulin in.
Okay, okay, so. Oh, I don't, I don't even know. Madam Mayor.
Just because I, I. We don't, okay? So even if you offset, yeah, okay, but we still owe those premiums from before in order to cover any claims, where are we gonna come up with $7,000?
Right, right, again.
I don't have $7,000.
And that's going back, again, we either have to, we have to, I think, have another meeting as soon as possible next week to discuss, the first thing on the agenda needs to be, how are we going to get some money? Until some of these other things are, and that's either finding a bank that's gonna loan us some money, um, contacting DOA and seeing if there's any of those emergency funds available. Um, I, I think that's like the number one priority for a special meeting next week. How will we get some money?
Just so everyone knows, even if we don't continue with the insurance we have and get caught up, we're still responsible for the one payment, I think, of like $2,600. So they said we do still have to pay, yeah, we stopped. And that would be canceling, um, canceled as of August 1st, yeah, August 1st. If we don't come up with the seven grand, though, we still have to pay $2,600, just so you're aware.
So Monica will look at it and the insurance and stuff. And then when we convene next week, that we're gonna set a date for, we'll go ahead and review it and see. But in the meantime, you know, go look around, get some quotes.
Yeah, I would definitely see, I mean, because I just looked up for my sister and I mean, that she could get a really good silver plan, um, for like $47 a month with the subsidies that she qualified, you know, with her income. It's all income based. So. I've done it before too, you know, I've got decent plans, you know, paid $80, $90 a month based upon my income. So it's always an option too. I would definitely look into that as well. And, you know, we can talk about. And, you know, we can talk about any sort of allowance or whatever for, uh, employees.
Okay, can I get a motion to table this?
A motion to table it.
I'm sorry, we set a date?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gouna?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Let's move on to admin, staff, tools and training.
That was kind of my thing, was just that, and I know you sent me some information today, um, just on some of, you know, stewardship, compliance, accountability, policies. But, I mean, we really, I mean, we need a job description or some sort of punch list from you gals of what are we, monthly, what do we need to be submitting to state or federal? Um, you know, I know that there's water testing that needs to be done. I know that there's state budgets that, um, need to be submitted every year. We know that the audits need to be completed every year. Um, and so we just need to talk about, you know, what we're going to do once we have some money, again, this all comes back to money, providing the tools and the training to make sure that we are in compliance, that there's transparency and that everything is being completed the way it needs to be completed. So I think we have to get some sort of, you know, a game plan and, you know, something in, in motion, in action. And I think that starts with just that punch list of what, you know, what needs to be done, what, what is the job description? What is, you know, what do we need to be keeping up on? What do we need to be watching for? What? And then what these gals need to do that, to do that job, you know? Um, Cora, getting Cora certified. We need to make sure that, that they're bonded. You know, any, anything else, you know, again, tools, new software updates, um, certifications, training seminars, whatever we need to do. We just, we need to make sure that there's somebody in this office that can keep this town running.
I have a question. So there is a flyer taped to that counter right there that says the town is closed on the third Thursday of the month for training. What did you train them?
We never did close though.
I don't know, I'm just asking why it's there if you're not training.
That's, it was there when I started.
So you've never had training?
We would, once in a while, we would close down and just tell the computers updated and things like that.
Whoa, okay.
I got was, like I said, there when I studied.
What I'm getting at is in the budget, and I know I read it somewhere, where there was a mon- money that was allotted for some type of professional development. So if that wasn't used for that, where, where would that money have gone? Is...
Um, that we, for that training line item, anytime that anybody went to training or anything, that's what the line item that it would be.
So it really wasn't for the office?
It was, I, the only people I've ever saw sent training were the utility workers, whether they had to go get their licenses renewed or like Joe, money came out of, but that part of the budget for him to go get his water license, all that. But as far as I've been, I've never been trained on anything and I've been given a lot of things to do and researched and Googled and calculated.
Right, that will pass a part of where Angela is suggesting that, you know, there'd be some type of professional development for that office personnel.
From what I was under the impression when on the fourth Thursday of the month, the office was supposed to be closed for training, computer update, maintenance. But I, really, since I've been here and it's been eight years, I've never seen it closed on the Thursday for a board meeting.
Okay.
So that's just, so we'll take the sign down.
Right. Thanks, Vernon. Well, where do you wanna go with your?
Um, I mean, I really don't necessarily have a motion at this point in time. It, you know, again, it's, it's, I, I think it's gonna have to be, like you said, it's a development thing. There's gonna be research and development needed. Um, so I'd say we table it, it's really getting late, people wanna go. But it's something that we gotta, you know, look at because we can't, you know, keep expecting these to, you know, to do stuff that they haven't been training for, haven't been certified in. You know, and, and expect to climb out of a hole that we're in.
I understand, so can we get a motion to table this?
Yeah, motion to table it.
Rowcall?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gouna?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
So before we end the meeting, we need to set a date to meet next week.
I think we saw the few items here.
Oh, correspondence. Approval of the bills, that's an issue.
Uh, nothing can be approved if there's fifteen hundred dollars in the general fund. Um, and have you collected the majority of utility bills at this point?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm supposed to start billing next week and then we'll probably get more people paying out at the beginning. That's kind of what we're paying with. So my question is, I've just been, I went ahead and paid stuff that had been approved at previous meetings because I never got it out. Going forward, if I need to pay something, do I just call you or Linda or?
Call, call, just because, now, let's make this clear. Just because you call me doesn't mean we're gonna pay it.
Yeah, yeah, so, or do I make the, I, I, I mean, I don't want.
No, don't make the decision to pay it, let's just make sure.
Like the health insurance, I wasn't sure what. Okay, so call you and then you guys all, you'll figure it out and let me know. Just so going forward, I know what I need to do if somebody's demanding the money. Um, this is, so we have water being hauled to a resident of that, um, Mauricio Canyon because that's been out forever. They call every couple, every Monday for a payment for like two prior weeks. Do I need to get approval to pay things like that over the phone with a debit card? Most probably, I can just tell the guy that I get a hold of the board and I'll, I'll do that. Yeah, that's the living water bill. And basically, I just paid him, I arguably, on Monday as well. And he's supposed to call every other Monday for payment, so.
Yeah, I mean, just really, nothing can be going out there.
I think you're gonna have to explain that again.
So basically, we don't have Mauricio while going. So the people that were getting fed water off that line into town, which would be Magoons, um, Jim Healy, I think they're the only two right now that don't have water. Um, Jim Healy was just told, sorry, we will never, until we get the Mauricio, I've been running, then you just can't get water. So he's been without water for over a year at his house.
Oh, wow.
And that was the response he got, was until the Mauricio's fixed, we can't do anything. But, um, Magoons, they live up there as well, coming down from Mauricio. The arrangement was made for them that we're hauling water in at three seven, or a hundred and seventy-five dollars a load. They bring it once a week with a thousand gallons and the town's been footing that bill for over.
Why do we have to foot the bill? We're not footing the bill for the other people that are going out and getting their own water. I mean, I would be upset if I'm driving to train again and having to haul water and then I come to find out that somebody else is getting theirs paid for, I would be upset.
And Magoon pays their bill every month, which is forty-five dollars a month is what they're paying for the water. But, I mean, it's being hauled in and I, that's been since the Mauricio's been down.
Do you hear that?
So I don't.
Jim Healy has to haul his water, he doesn't have any preferential treatment.
Right.
But this other person, they get theirs hauled in and we have to pay for it.
That's not fair.
And they only pay forty-five dollars a month.
But it costs us.
Yeah, that's not, that, we need to visit that.
So do I just cancel the water and tell the Magoons it's now that they have?
Well, we're gonna have to, or do we add that to next week's agenda? We already have a whole agenda, you know, we have to address this immediately. We do.
Oh, can I bring up another thing that probably, I don't know the rules on this either? But we've been paying, um, the municipal judge for over two years, every month, uh, salary and he doesn't work. So I kinda brought up to Sarah, do we need to get rid of the judge?
I was gonna, I mean, can't we do just on call and pay for when he shows up? How much are we paying him a month?
Two fifty a month.
Two hundred and fifty dollars?
Mm-hmm. I, I mean, it's not a great amount, but.
No, it's a good amount.
But right now, yeah.
Yes, it does.
And he hasn't been here just because we have no marshal, so there have been no tickets, so there's no court.
Right.
But I don't know.
Is it required that we have money when we're broke?
Not, that's supposed to come? No, most of our, Derek's going with me Saturday and he's gonna explain, so I'll give a better report at our next meeting. But I don't see the Mauricio being running.
Well, and the Mauricio was supposed to be fixed like two or three, two weeks ago, but the problem was we had no money for payroll or anything. And a phone call was made to Andrea's to postpone it, I'm assuming. So Andrea's.
Who made the call to Andrea and Walsen Services?
I think Joe did. He was gonna let him know not to come because we didn't wanna pay another bill. We couldn't, or get in debt for another bill we couldn't afford, so.
We need the water.
But he needed to, now there, he, he should have cleared it with the board.
Yeah, and so Mauricio, the, from what I've gotten, they just need to come down and re-drill and put the equipment back in and it's even ready to go. And I think that they haven't come because they're aware we don't have any money to pay them, is what I think, so.
So we have to re-drill the whole well? No, 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 no.
Well, I think they were gonna drill it deeper and then put.
She'll tell on you.
Most of it, I guess, is already done up there. The electrical, um, the electrical's already been done up there and I think they just had to put longer pipe in. The well's deep enough, but the pipe is not long enough, so they have to put more pipe in and re, and redo the pump, I believe. But most of it's already done.
Is that what you're saying? That's what I think. Oh, good.
Yeah.
I was looking, I was asking him, is that what you actually see there?
Since the Mauricio's been off, at least. At least in a year, we have been, when we were checking.
I'll have to, he's gonna go with me, we'll figure out what really is there.
For a while.
It didn't look like it was an easy fix. The electric boxes off the wall, the filtration system that hasn't been used is up there. Until I go up there with him, you know, it's, we're not gonna know exactly what's going on with it. So at our next meeting, I can have an answer.
Okay.
And also, not to be the bearer of bad news, but we had, um, from.
That's it, you're cut off.
Well, we had from like, I don't know, it's getting close to the thirty days. We basically had thirty days to get the Mauricio fixed and back online or the state was gonna take it offline because it's been down for so long.
Those, those are important and it's imperative that Gerald was manbroken.
Well, I was under the assumption that Joe, Ken, Gerald, everybody knew about this. They've been talking about this while needing to fix.
No, that's, that's what we're trying, that's what I was trying to explain to that, right? This is what we're trying to do. We're trying to correct everything from yesterday.
And so are we, I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
I get that, but what I'm saying is if you think that it's an issue that, you know, the board needs to address, you know, tomorrow or the day after, you need to let us know.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because what I've been told by certain board members is I shouldn't even be at the meetings and I need to sit down and shut up unless I'm asked a question, so. I don't feel comfortable to talk to anybody.
But, but those are all behind it, but that's all behind it, okay? I'm the one asking the questions and we're presenting it to the board right now. So going forward, if it's something like this, you need to let us know.
Yeah, so the Mauricio, I'm a bit worried. I know we have a meeting, I think, Wednesday. I don't know if that's what this meeting is, but the Mauricio.
Meeting with who on Wednesday?
I mean, Friday, sorry, um, that meeting Friday at nine with the drinking water.
That's, that's a different meeting.
Something else, yeah, so, but I know the Mauricio is probably close to being taken offline.
That's a secret augmentation pump meeting.
We don't have the pump in yet for the Mauricio, do we? It was set out to be repaired, we're waiting for it to get back, is that not the one?
No.
No, that's, that's for the chlorine.
Yeah, that's a chlorine pump and we're just getting it repaired so that when this one goes out, 'cause they keep going out, we'll have one on hand.
'Cause they borrowed one from Walsen, right?
Yes, yes, so when we got the new one in, we took the borrowed one back to Walsenburg and then, um, Joe, I guess, shipped out the broken one to get repaired 'cause it was under warranty. Is, I'm guessing what was discussed with Joe and Sarah, I don't know, I saw a few people watch that.
Yeah, it was returned for, um, to be repaired.
Well, this Mauricio water issue needs to be resolved ASAP. So that's gotta go on agenda.
All wrong so fast. Like two months ago, I, I took some chlorine up there. We looked it up in air, it was running, maybe it was longer than that, maybe two months. But it was running. Were you saying now there's nothing in there? Yeah, that's why I had to go up there with him so we know what's going on. I mean, it's, today was our, really, our first trip up there. We were looking at what's there, the filters were set aside and I found out well, they'd just been sitting there for a long time. But then there was a question of a pump being out up there and there's, wasn't even a chlorine drum there, was it? No. So it, there's, we just had to find out exactly where we are. And that's the only man that can help me find it.
That's where Andrea's did say, it's basically they, the pipe that's in there is not long enough. So they have to add more pipe down in there to get to the, more of the water to bring it up so it doesn't keep burning out the well pump.
And that's.
So, and basically Andrea's already has the pump. They just have to come down and do that part of it. The electrical's already been done by Andrea's.
And I've been told so many different things on so many different things that I'm going to go with the process I just said seven times. I'm going up there tomorrow with him. I'll track this down, we'll figure out what's going on with it and we'll present it at the next meeting.
Okay, let's decide when the next meeting is. What's gonna work for all of you? We need to cut this short, we gotta go home. Plus, another thing that we need to, um, if we have to have several meetings, we're gonna do that instead of these, you know, nine-thirty, ten o'clock meetings because there is some people that are employed and, sorry, and, you know, they wanna go home too.
Um, I'm good with Tuesday or Wednesday.
Vernon, what works for you?
Well, I never had one once, I don't know, ever. I'm, yeah, I'm not employed.
What works for you?
I'll do whatever.
Well, the whatever's over there.
I don't do Fridays, sorry.
No, no.
My Tuesday or Wednesday, if that's maybe. Wednesday?
Yes.
Wednesday at what time? Six P.M.?
Yep, yep.
Hey.
Is there a reason why we don't do it at five, just asking?
Monica's still working?
I don't get out, so.
Not.
I, I mean, I can still work.
Good chance.
Why do you think he cares if I bring his pocket?
I work for the job, Terry, just go for it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for being here.